Welcome to the town of Atherton's December seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen regular meeting. Here we come from closed session. Can I have everybody please stand for...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, can I get the floor call please?
Councilmember Lemris.
President.
Councilmember Whitmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeGoya.
Here.
Mayor Wees.
Uh, here. And do we have a closed session?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the city council met in closed session with councilmember Lemris excused because of a possible conflict, because of distance to the railroad tracks. The city council heard the first item, gave direction to the city attorney regarding Amika's participation. In the second item, the city council, uh, took a report and gave direction to the, to the city attorney and city manager, essentially stating that they did not feel that it would be appropriate at this time to participate in an environmental lawsuit against the, um, electrification project, but that they would support continued environmental, uh, comments to that agency, to the agency that's reviewing it. And in the future, if there were other substantive issues that came down, they would review any possibility of litigation based on those substantive issues. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I want to welcome everybody here this evening, and I am going to go ahead and move on to our portion of the agenda, and it's, in some ways, it's kind of like taking care of some business, the message from the outgoing mayor. And, uh, so again, good evening, everybody. This evening, as I said before, I am proud and humbled to have served as your mayor for two thousand and fourteen. I have truly been honored to serve the city and represent the city throughout the state. I am proud to call the city my home. Being mayor gave me the opportunity to lead by example, which sets the tone for others. Over the years, I've attended my share of public meetings throughout the county, and in my opinion, when I took the role as mayor, Atherton needed a little more structure to increase our efficiency and accessibility to our public meetings. As a result, this was one of my goals as mayor. This goal, I believe, could be facilitated by having a council that respected one another and worked collaboratively, a goal, as those of you who have attended council meeting regularly saw me, that we achieved. In the past year, council members dedicated more of their personal time to meet with staff reviewing council packets. In doing so, meetings have become more efficient, and we've increased the ability and willingness and participation, because meetings no longer extend into the early hours. As one resident expressed to me after a meeting, "Thank you for respecting my time." While these are some of the positive changes during my term, I also accept responsibility for the items that created a degree of controversy as well. Bringing back permit to the park, right away issues on park traffic, hiring a new tennis professional, our concerns related to air traffic over Atherton, the APOA's use of the Gilmore, traffic on ECR, and legal action against a resident for creating a public nuisance by having a house that attracted illegal activity. And finally, the approval of the Atherton bill, which began when voters approved a valid measure in two thousand and twelve. Arnold H. Glasgow said it best when he said, "A good leader takes more than a share of blame and a little less share of credit." As I reflect back on the year, I see that I was perhaps a quiet leader, enabling others to be championing certain successes, while I watched them on the sidelines shouldering the disappointment of those issues and needs we could not or would not resolve without becoming decisive. I hope our residents and staff have grown through my leadership, and that the town is a little better than when my term began. As a town, we have accomplished a great deal during the past year and have set a lot in motion. This could not have been achieved without the collaboration of the entire council, the help of many community volunteers, and the dedicated professional staff. The state of our city is safe, fiscally stable, and it has a great foundation for the decision-making of tomorrow. With boldness, leadership, and determination, we are leveraging today's success for a brighter future as a smart city for all of our residents. We're not done in it. We have to continue to think smart, plan smart, and use our resources wisely, and take advantage of twenty-first century tools. Smart government works for its people by beating them where they are. People are more electronically connected more than ever. The town's use of technology has created its highest level of transparency in its history, lowered service costs, and has provided a more convenient customer service. Our town is safe. Under the leadership of Chief Ed Klein, we have been able to build a police department that reflects professionalism, honor, and integrity. In a very demanding market for police professionals, we are now fully staffed. Hearing the concerns from residents related to traffic concerns, we have established two full-time motor officers to patrol our city. Traffic concerns near our schools are a top concern. In conjunction with creating a school-city meeting, we have reestablished a school resource officer to work with all of our campuses in town. The goal of this position is to be proactive and not reactive. Finally, we are actively recruiting a hybrid position for a town community service and co-enforcement officer. The creation of this position will assist the town in educating people on town regulations and insist on its enforcement. Our town is fiscally stable. We, as a town, have adopted a balanced two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen budget with a five-year capital improvement plan. Without creating any service level reductions, we have allocated a portion to the parcel tax towards capital infrastructure. We have contributed another two million dollars towards our pet life policies. By making this investment, we are creating a more financially stable town future. By revamping the budget, we have eliminated our dependence on E-RAP, adjuvant resource, and have dedicated any future E-RAP to long-term liabilities or to town's capital infrastructure. We have done an extensive review of the town's revenue alternatives to assess possible alternatives that might better serve the town. Finally, we have adopted a new reserve policy. With the interest in assisting the council so that we can make more informed decisions, the town has completed the town's first bike pedestrian master plan and accepted the civic center master plan. We are in the latter stages of the park master plan and the drainage master plan. All of the town's bridges, drains, and culverts are currently being evaluated. Doing so will assist us in making means and priority calls. Before both vehicle and pedestrian traffic alone, up in a reality is a concern for the town. We have initiated talks with Caltrans. Staff is preparing an RFP for an operational analysis, and we've had discussions with neighboring jurisdictions. Because our decisions and neighboring jurisdictions' decisions could possibly impact each other, Atherton has established a very mayor, vice mayor regional committee to help enable the meeting for dialogue exchange. The town and its members of the rail committee are currently evaluating Caltrans recent release of the final environmental impact report related to the peninsula quarter electrification. After making a complete analysis of the ER, we will be making the appropriate decision to protect and interest this town and its residents. We are positioning ourselves to prepare for the future and not to be expect, uh, surprised by unexpected services. In closing, I extend my thank you to my fellow council members, committee members, and staff and the public, that we make Atherton a wonderful place to live, and I hope everyone enjoys their holidays. So, we are going to move on to the selection of the town's mayor and vice mayor, and I'm going to ask to re-stand some.
Thank you, Mayor. I will declare the office of the mayor vacant and open up nominations.
I'd like to nominate our vice mayor, Rick DeGoya, for our new mayor in two thousand and fifteen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed?
Thank you.
Move on, I have you. That's you. Congratulations.
I will declare the office of the vice mayor vacant and open up nominations.
I would like to nominate Elizabeth Lewis.
Set.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Can we shift around so that I can get out of the...
Thank you.
Repeat. I state your name.
I, Rick DeGoya.
Will you go on this far?
This is all my swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance...
That I bear true faith and allegiance...
...to the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
...without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
...for purposes of evasion...
For purposes of evasion...
...that I will well and faithfully discharge...
That I will well and faithfully discharge...
...the duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
I know we just, we'll do that. If I can't use it, that'll make it...
Uh, may?
Uh, my first item on the agenda is the message from the incoming mayor. I want to thank Kerry and each of the members of the council for the terrific work that you have done this year and for your continued service to the town. I also want to thank the city manager, the chief of police, and each member of the town staff who worked so hard for this town. We are really fortunate to have the experience and the commitment from this group. You are exceptional, and I really believe that. I want to extend a special thanks to each of the residents who worked so hard on the different committees that you work on and for the advice that you provide to the council. We could not do the work that we do if it were not for you. Finally, I want to thank all of the Atherton residents who have enabled my reelection. It is a great honor to represent this community. Uh, it's really a highlight of my life to represent this community and feel the connection that I have felt over the last year of this town. Throughout my first year, I was constantly asked how it was going, how I felt about it, and almost every time I answered that it has been far more strategic than I thought. It is strategic because we're dealing with issues that are real issues in the lives of our residents, and it's a true honor to be in a position to represent you and to work hard to identify what it means to effectively represent you. I'd like to make a few comments about the priorities that I'm looking at over the next year. First, I want to increase resident awareness, communication, and engagement with the town. Over the past three years, Atherton has done a wonderful job of increasing its outreach to its residents. In two thousand and twelve, we introduced a new, easy-to-navigate website and weekly notifications to subscribers on e-news and Newsflash. In two thousand and thirteen, we introduced the Police Notification System, System RIMS, and we successfully deployed OpenGov dot com on the town's website, which provides very detailed access to our revenue and expenses. In two thousand and fourteen, we initiated, we initiated the e-track it system to allow residents to track their building permit status. This is all part of a commitment to openness and transparency in every facet of our town and this council's activities. The focus has been on increasing communication from the town to the residents. My first goal for two thousand and fifteen is to focus on enabling communication from the residents to the town. We need to improve the ability of residents to communicate your interests, your concerns, and your priorities. This means deploying technology that encourages your input while minimizing staff time to manage that process. This is especially important this year because we are about to launch on the biggest project in the history of Atherton, building a new civic center, and because we are assessing the results from the master plans for Holborn Palmer Park, the bike and pedestrian paths, and our drainage needs. The costs outlined by these master plans well exceed the amount that we have in our capital improvement project budget. Consequently, our focus has to be on prioritization. These priorities will be set by the council, but not by the council alone. Establishing these priorities must include significant input from the residents. So I am committed to finding a technology this year that will enable us to accurately reach out to you and enable you to communicate to us your priorities in a manner that we can use those in our decision-making. My second goal is to continue the council's commitment to Atherton's fiscal health and investment in our infrastructure. Atherton is very fortunate to have had three years of budget surplus as a result of good fiscal management and increased property values. My focus is to hold the line on expenses and invest in our infrastructure. Prior councils properly chose to reduce our long-term liabilities, make needed in capital improvements, and grow our reserves while holding on a spending line. I believe that we should continue to limit our operating expenses, continue to pay down our long-term liabilities where needed, maintain our reserves, and prioritize improvements in our infrastructure. My third goal is to launch the design phase for the new civic center and engage and, and find ways to engage our residents in this process everywhere that we can. I am extremely excited by the civic center project. It will improve Atherton by dramatically creating a pedestrian-friendly center to our town where people can gather and celebrate our history and what is special about Atherton. It will provide our staff with a safe, healthy work environment that they can be proud of. It is an opportunity to pull the town together, both in connection with the civic center design and the necessity of funding it with private money. Finally, I hope that this project will be the first net-zero civic center in California, an effort that would, that would reduce the town's operating expense by generating as much energy as consumed and by creating a model that we can proudly share with other municipalities and with our residents to help you generate ideas for increased energy efficiency in your homes. My fourth goal is to improve the broadband and cellular services that are available to our residents. Over the past six months, councilmember Whitmer and I have worked with an extraordinary committee composed of many technology-savvy residents and technology experts from each of the private and public schools in Atherton. This committee is looking at what we can do to improve our technology infrastructure and our communication services. The committee was formed because when I first moved to Atherton, I was shocked to discover how poor our cellular and broadband connections were. In addition, as a council representative to the Library JPA, I am very aware that Atherton residents are paying nearly one point three million dollars in annual property taxes to our special library district in excess of what our library and district administration costs are. This excess is referred to as the Atherton Donor Fund. While we will use all of these accumulated funds to build our new library, it is essential for us to think about how we, for us to think creatively about how we will use this annual surplus for our library service needs. One idea for use of some of these funds is for a public-private partnership to enable a dramatic improvement in the quality of our communication services by bringing a fiber network to all Atherton residents. The concept is that the library from the Atherton Donor Fund would pay an annual fee to subsidize the deployment of fiber throughout the town and would provide each resident with basic internet services. Through this fiber network, the library would be able to provide cutting-edge programming that could become a model for libraries across the country. After all, this is the twenty-first century, and we are going to be building a twenty-first century library. Residents would get internet access at no additional cost and then would purchase expanded service from one of the contracted service providers, much as we do now. This is still in the conceptual stage, but over this next year, I hope to guide this committee to bring a concrete proposal to our residents and to our council. My fifth goal was the most difficult for me to identify. I think that this goal, uh, will, uh, be focused on encouraging the conversations with you that I feel like we need to have. In addition to what I have mentioned previously, uh, there's a number of other issues that are important. There's enhanced public safety with a focus on the need to fill openings in the police department. In the last year, I felt that the difficulty that the chief had in filling our vacancies was the most challenging operating issue that we faced as a town. There's also a critical issue with safety in Atherton, and road safety in Atherton, especially on El Camino, and there's the looming issue of HSR in Caltrain. Finally, there is an issue of significant construction that we experienced throughout Atherton, and how to manage the noise, traffic, and proximity of ever-larger houses on our property lines. The, the, we don't, we haven't yet reconciled with how to deal with this, but these are priorities that we need a conversation about. So, my sense is that what I can do for this fifth goal is to commit more of my time to make myself accessible to Atherton. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to come here to the council chambers every Tuesday from noon to two P.M., and I want to encourage residents to come, bring them lunch. We'll sit around and have lunch together, and we'll talk about the issues. Uh, there's plenty of people that I haven't met, and I will encourage you to come and meet with me. Uh, I want to help you get involved in the town, and I want to address the concerns that you have. This is a humbling experience to be the mayor of a town like Atherton. I think that we have a number of really interesting and strategic things that we're going to be facing over this next year. I've tried to address those that were most obvious to me. If there are others that are important to you, I want to hear about them. Finally, I just want to say that I think everyone on this council is very committed as part of this job of sitting up here to be accessible to you, and I hope that over this next year, um, I'll be able to help you work through what issues you have and make the town better. Thank you. So, now we're on to the regular public meeting. We start with public comments. Are there any public comments for issues that are not on the agenda?
Good evening, Mayor DeGoya and fellow councilpersons. I am Walter Sleeth and live at two-two-seven Cattell Padre in the Lindenwood neighborhood. I am here this evening to present to the council a petition to quote "halt any further development plans or any construction of bleachers at Holborn Palmer Park for the Mendel Park-Atherton Little League." Currently, the petition has over sixty signatures. In essence, we are submitting this petition because the council failed to follow the promised impartial analysis expressed with Measure M, which repeatedly says there will be a planning process and a review with citizen input. The process has failed to weigh the need, costs, and possible injury to other uses of the park. A considerable section of the playing field area of the park will be off limits to all other uses for half the year. The process for making the plans with the Little League lacked transparency. Mr. Rodericks had a conflict of interest from the start as he made it clear that he was in favor of the Little League proposal. No other views were considered. The initial design drawings were removed from the town's website only to be returned but to a different location after my complaint. Residents were kept uninformed about the planning process. While early on, Mr. Whitmer worked to accommodate the Planning Commission's recommendations, the Little League insisted on their plans, and the council gave in without public discussion. The impact on parking, noise, and traffic on the east side of town were ignored. The impact on the Mendel Park-Felt and Gables neighborhood was ignored. This whole process should be a part of the master planning process going on now. It seems to have fallen through the cracks. There has been a failure of due process. The council must take greater care in listening to residents' views on any measures and to take much more seriously the positions of town commissions and committees, which are the voices of its residents. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to present the views of many in the town who believe irreparable injury is being done to our fine old park. With that, I would like to have anybody who's signed the petition and is here to just raise their hands, okay?
Thank you very much.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Rosemary Malbec. I live at ninety Lloyd Avenue. And I'm here to encourage any of you who live in the town of Atherton and care about the character of it, that you, I recommend that you become aware of what electrifying Caltrain and possibly blending it with the high-speed rail will do to the center of Atherton. If you care about what you see and hear along Caltrain's road, their right-of-way, in other words, the center of downtown Atherton, read the final environmental impact report on electrification, which can be reached via our current website or in the library, and/or come to the rail committee meeting every other month on the first Tuesday of the month. That's later than your meeting. Uh, our next meeting is in February. There you will hear a variety of opinions about the many aspects of this proposed project. We welcome your visit. And I would encourage people in the civic center project to especially get involved with that issue because they are neighbors, to say the least. Okay?
And is there any other public comment?
Greg Conlin at forty-three Virginia Lane. I just want to sort of follow on on the last speaker, the rail committee, the, I mean, the rail, high-speed rail. The city of Palo Alto is, is doing a hard look at trenching the train tracks for quite a distance, not all the way, but most of Palo Alto. And the rail committee, I've talked to them, I'm a member of that, and we are looking at that also. But I want to think, just from a long-range standpoint, that I think the high-speed rail would be devastated if it was at, at surface. And it's not being contemplated to be elevated, so it's only at surface versus in a trench. And I just think that if the council supports, in the long run, putting it in a trench, it's more likely to get done than if you're not, so I would encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close with a comment. And, uh, we have already had the report out of closed session, so let's just get that out. I would have seen that before.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have the written report before you, and it's on the website as well. There's only a few things in it this month, one of which is a report on storm again. And just last week, I think the town responded well. We did have a number of flooding areas throughout town. Our public work staff, police staff, and fire department did an excellent job, and they responded well. They were well-prepared for it. It was an advance event we knew about, so we took it out there in advance, cleared all the storm rains, catched any storm rain trees for days, right? So, uh, that's still falling, falling trees. Uh, the other item in the report should be hitting mailboxes. It was hoped for today, but it might be tomorrow. It's the, uh, the Hey Did You Know flyer that the town put out about the public services... It's the "How Did You Know" flyer that the town put out about the public services that we provide, and on the back is a snapshot of town finances, which is very helpful to the community. So that's good by our cross.
Can I just make a comment? I just want to make a comment on the city manager's report, and it's always on the web and is part of the agenda packet, so I encourage you to at least read it. For the past year and a half, the city manager has been putting these together, and they have gotten better and better and better, every one. Not only with more information, with dates and upcoming events and the schedules, but also the use of graphics and photos and charts. And it's very, very informative, and it's succinct, it's fun to read, there's links to other, you know, information articles that have to do with what we're involved in. And I just didn't want this, I wanted to say thank you for doing that for us, for council, for the residents, and here we are in assembly again, so I really appreciate it.
Through the chair. Yes.
I would like to say I had an opportunity to get a lot of telephone calls during that last storm, and I want to say thank you to George and the entire staff, police department. Steve, you know I'm also a senior over in with a wave, but everybody, it was just quite the participation, and you guys did a fabulous job. And I know that it was a difficult time with the limited resources we do have, but I think that successfully, it came off very well, and I hope it's a learning model to continue to learn from that and move forward. So the next time we get it, we're just as prepared as we were this last time. So, great job, staff, George, excellent job.
I also want to say that, as you know, notice that just went out, it hasn't come to any of our mailboxes yet, but you should be getting it tomorrow or the next day. It was really motivated to let people know some of the services that are available in Atherton, including the hidden secret of our post office and the ability to figure out that he's here despite the holidays, but...
I think it's the links out.
Yeah, but it's a great little flyer, so I hope everybody has a chance to take a look at it.
That's great.
We received it today. No!
Wayton Park?
That's because you're in Wayton Park. Personally. Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. I have a comment on the consent calendar as well. What's the comment? Well, let me start with any, does any member of the public wish to pull any items from the consent calendar? None, all three of the council. George, you want to add something?
Sure, it's item number 11, the traffic management program. I mentioned to the council in my one-on-one meetings, one of the comments was, you know, we need to make sure as we do these things that we collaborate with our stakeholder agencies, one of which is the fire department, we've got Caltrain as another. We're going to make sure that we do that as part of this as well.
Okay. Items eight through thirteen are on the consent calendar. Everybody in the council is prepared?
I'd just like to just make a comment on the OPEC. And I know that George mentioned in email, I guess a couple of the people do too, but I think we've done a great job paying that down, and I concur a hundred percent with the, one more year probably will take care of getting us to a ninety-three percent on the people that are actually retired, and then we get into a pay-as-you-go. And I appreciate George sending out that email with regards to potential, need for a side fund of a certain percentage, et cetera, you know, as we, you know, get ready to manage ourselves against possible increases and issues and shortfalls on per. So, it was a great report, and I appreciate the insight. Thanks.
Okay. Karen, it's on this calendar. Want to get a motion? Okay, I have a motion. Second in favor of approving the consent form? Aye. That's unanimous. Let's move on to item fourteen, which is the event garden development agreement. Right?
Actually, Steve Tyler will be presenting this slide.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm here to present the event development agreement. This would be your approval for development of an agreement between the town of Atherton and the Holbrook Palmer Park Foundation for a new event garden in the park. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Frank Merrill from the Park Foundation to give a presentation, their big plans for the event garden in the park.
Hi, welcome. Hi, Frank Merrill. Representing the Park Foundation, we have given you all the mass information, data, costs. Hopefully, there aren't too many questions. I have some other resources here to help me answer if there are. The, we, I think that our due diligence on providing us a facility is going to be a great addition to the, not only Pavilion Park in general, but it allows for better use of that portion of the park. We've indicated the trees that are going to be removed for various reasons, but we also indicated an awful lot of trees that are going to stay, and some of which are going to be moved. Some components of the other things are going to be reused as well. The key thing for us was that we've provided enough improvement without excessive costs to the town. It, Steve Tyler and Public Works has provided us with, what they gave us a ballpark number on additional costs, and it's going to be a very minimal amount of additional costs to the town if we are able to build this. Most everything is drought tolerant, they're going to be long-lived plants, easy maintenance, and so, questions, fire away.
Does anybody have a question regarding...
Well, Frank, I know it's in your packet, and I don't know if you're going to walk through the chart.
I can, if you'd like.
But I think that'd be worthwhile, and I think, you know, touching base, there was a little bit of an issue on the rose garden. I know that you have the chart there showing.
I was going to mention that.
Touching base on that to make sure people...
We have, Marion is not here, I don't think, I thought she was going to be here. We have achieved a, a plan on how to move the existing rose garden, existing roses, into a new rose garden, which will actually be a much more open area, better sun, better visibility, and so we'll be able to save the roses and accomplish what we need to do in the middle of the, the new event garden. Do you want me to actually physically point that out?
Why, just shift to the charts and...
Okay.
Those are good charts.
Well, let's go to, yeah, there's, that's what we have right now. It's overgrown. It's the, I don't know if any of you are aware, that was built in the seventies, some of it as a scent garden, and it ended up being somewhat of a tracked, I guess you might call it a tracked nuisance, lots of bee stings, lots of bees, so we downsized that in the eighties and nineties. But if we were going to accomplish keeping Diana, the statue, from the original Palmer home, she's going to be moved into a new location, and again, hopefully put in a spot where she's a little more visible and gets the respect she's due. The only major tree that's going to come down is a camphor tree, and it's in a decline anyway, and kind of breaks my heart because my cousin thought that and broke his arm, but that's okay. He deserved it, he was way too high. Beyond that, we, we've got new plants going in, honey locusts, red oaks, genkos. Hopefully, with, you know, genkos are rather slow-growing, but hopefully within my lifetime we'll be able to see a significant increase in size of those trees, so. I'm not sure I can even see this thing right here, I can't read it, but I don't know if I see that, so. Not going to be much help to you. Oh, there we go, just a little bit. The rose garden is actually...
I think we...
Next slide.
Got it on there?
Okay. There you go. Why don't you go with that one?
Yeah, that's better. That'll work.
Actually, the next slide shows the rose garden.
Okay, we'll go to the next slide, it has a rose garden, right? Okay, there we go, right there. With the new construction of the, eventually with the parking, if with the park master plan, we're going to put the rose garden just to the west side of the pavilion. It now is presently back about there, and it's underneath a lot of trees. There's actually a significant amount of shade in that area, and so we're pulling it out to a more sunny area, and it'll be a lot more visible.
So, actually, it'll be visible from the pavilion?
It will. You can, you'll literally be able to look out the window of the pavilion, the west windows of the pavilion to be able to see it.
That'll be nice.
How long would they're going to be also shielded in the trash cans?
Yes, that will be part of the...
I'll make it look like the pavilion would look a lot nicer.
Yeah, we're going to, hopefully with the, with the park master plan stuff, we're going to be able to get the, the, all the trash bins, which are sitting right here, we're going to, well, there's still some discussion of where, but we've also said we could, we, the rose people, said they could tolerate actually having a lattice put behind it and the roses growing up, so that would be okay too for climate roses.
You, you were, you alluded to the, that it would not cost the town very much money? I thought that a hundred percent was the same thing.
I'm talking about maintenance.
Oh, maintenance.
This is, this would be downstream maintenance.
Yeah.
We're not building something that's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars a year to maintain.
Right.
It would be something that's very low maintenance, so that...
I had a question on your chart about that, because it looked like the cost per year going forward, there was forty-one new trees, is that forty-one trees that are... It says the shade trees, are there forty-one each annually, eight hours, at a hundred and eight dollars per unit? So, if you're, and you don't have your eight per year, eight hundred and sixty-four dollars a year?
I'll let Steve speak to that.
Is that, am I reading that correctly?
I, I don't think so. So, you, you were referring to the maintenance for the trees?
Well, in the event garden incremental maintenance costs, I said.
Right.
You've got high hedge, low hedge, shade trees.
Okay.
It's forty-one each?
There's...
Forty-one new trees?
Forty-one each, and eight hours per unit, per year.
And so, it'd be eight per forty-one?
No, that would be, it's going to take eight hours of maintenance annually at a hundred and eight dollars an hour, and that's how we came to the eight hundred and sixty-four dollars.
So, they're going to take eight hours annually to maintain forty-one trees?
Well, for the first four years, the, this is being done by the, by the...
Yes.
Right. And, you know, to go in there, once they're all established shade-wise, eight hours is basically one day in a tree crew to go in with those forty trees at a manageable level. We're figuring one day to go in there and nip them up should be, should be planning. Yeah. A three-man crew going in there at a hundred and eight dollars an hour. That's what we're paying today. I mean, prices could go up in the future for that.
Okay, it just seems low for forty-one trees.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I, my gardener that, to do one tree...
Well, they're not, I'm not counting on big giant oaks.
I need a designer to get Steve to get to do that.
My husband does not get a laugh, okay?
The real issue is if you count the trees, we're talking about very small trees, not large trees like you have.
I see.
Right.
First couple of years, they don't happen, there's not going to be any trimming at all.
Right.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
I'm assuming that the trees that you selected were forested, that's on...
Or, excuse me?
They were forested, that's on there.
Yeah, that's what we're...
I think it's a very impressive project, and the team that you've put together, Lynn Jewel and her partner Ray, I mean, their, their resumes are very impressive, so I think it's an fabulous opportunity for the park to have.
So, let's have a discussion after we have public comment. Is there any public comment? There are no public comment on this end, so we'll move out of the council.
Well, I just...
I'd like to make a quick comment. So, of course, I, you know, I'm the council rep on the Holbrook Palmer Park Foundation, and I know Frank and Denise put in a heck of a lot of work on this, but, but also Mary Lou and Jeremy put in a lot, a lot of time, you know, in assessing and making sure that the numbers worked and questioning, and, you know, this has been kind of a culmination of many, many hours of work and a project that started, you know, long back, Shirley Carlson presented to us a number of years ago, and these guys really have brought it to fruition now, but they all put in a lot of time and work in the contract, et cetera, and so, you know, for me, I'd like to just have the rest of the town recognize, you know, that the real work that these guys put in is going to be a great addition when it's completed, and the town, you know, of course, as you know, we're trying to bring events in, it's going to be a great venue, but it's going to be a great place just for people to go enjoy the park without an event, so, so anyway, thanks to all y'all.
Other comment? Well, I'll leave a comment. I sit on the park and rec committee, so I've had an opportunity to review this plan, and I want to share Bill's comment. I want to commend the park commission and the friends of the park, Frank and Denise in particular. I really think you've done a great job. This project needed to be done. I agree that I think it's going to create an area in the park that will be a very nice area to go to, it'll be relaxing and quiet. I hope that that will be a model for other areas in the park as we move forward and pick particular areas where we can preserve the pastoral feel in this park and find places for people to enjoy being there. I really commend you on a job well done. I look forward to getting, seeing this done. I hope it can move quickly so that we meet the timing needs in terms of, you know, under our schedules for things to be done in the park, I hope that event happens down the time.
That's why we needed approval.
I understand. So, who approves? Do I have a motion?
No.
Second? I hear a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Let's move to the next item. This is the second reading of the adoption of the ordinance of the city council regarding signs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Amendments to the signed ordinance were presented to the council on the October 1st study session for discussion and feedback. The comments basically revolved around the size of the signs, removal period for construction of signs, limitation for real estate and open house events, and driveway and access visibility. Staff amended the ordinance based on comments from the council. The ordinance was introduced at the last meeting. On November 19th, the council introduced the ordinance for first reading with a few minor changes. Signs were limited to fourteen square feet, maximum size. Signs up to two and a half feet in height were allowed within ten feet of a driveway or intersection, and no single site dimension of the sign could exceed four linear feet. That's how it's presented to you this evening. Staff and met again with the builders' roundtable folks, and their basic comments were, you know, more is always better, but we really appreciate the ordinance because it gives us the ability to regulate our subcontractor signs. So while we could live with fourteen feet, sixteen feet is something we might prefer. So staff's recommendation is that you make that one change back to sixteen square foot maximum size, and then adopt the ordinance of amendment chapter fifteen point three-six of the Atherton National Code related to signs. That concludes the staff.
Any questions in the council?
Well, I guess the question, now that there was, I wasn't at the meeting due to death in the family, but there was a, you know, there was a consensus of the council to go to fourteen feet, and actually, in the, when we first had the discussion, we, there was even more consensus to even make it even potentially smaller. So, you know, so I applauded the fourteen foot, which made it smaller. I just, I can understand why, why real estate builders want to have sixteen feet, but I don't see why suddenly we say, okay, let's move it back. I don't understand the logic of staff other than just bending over for the, for the contractor. What's, was there a real, was there a real logic? And they said they could live with fourteen, so why would you go back up to sixteen?
The consensus of the council wasn't exactly you, you managed in terms of consensus. It was, we had one council member from the meeting say twelve square feet, and then the other two council members, there were only three in attendance, were at sixteen square feet. So they compromised the fourteen square feet with the caveat that we go back to the builders' roundtable and ask them what they truly want.
We're in, no, we're in discussion, we're in questions. I have a question. Did staff do a review of what the current space usage is?
Yes, you have a, sir, that was also... Yes, you have a, sir, that was also one that came up in that last meeting, is that we do a survey and have that attached to the staff report. And, and probably out of those signs, you've probably got sixty percent of them that would comply at fourteen square feet, but another forty percent would not comply at sixteen square feet.
Uh, okay. Any other questions? Is there public comment on this side? Okay, hearing no public comment, let's move back to council.
So, um, I think I'm, I'm one of those who are advocating for the sixteen square feet because four by four is sixteen square feet. And, uh, I've talked to a number of, um, developers or contractors and they take a sheet of four by eight, sheet of plywood and cut it in half and they make their signs. And it's an efficient way of doing it and you don't have waste. And, you know, I know that these signs are kind of custom-made, but they do start with a four by eight sheet of plywood of some thickness and then they cut it in half and then they put their signs in. So I think that that's more, um, the norm. And if you're going to take all the other ancillary signs that are hanging along the fences and combine them onto that sign, you know, of a logo or whatever, then I think that a four by four or a fourteen square foot, it's not that big of a difference. I, I think, I'm not gonna, you know, follow my soil on that six, sixteen square feet, but I just think that it's reasonable to say that you could go up to sixteen feet. Because of that.
Actually, I attend the contractors forum and actually talk to a lot of realtors in general. I think the goal here is to get rid of the amount of sign pollution that exists. And I'm in favor of the sixteen square feet, similar to the logic that Elizabeth is saying, is that it's all the signs. And it gives us an ability and they're all, everybody that I have talked to related to it is very supportive that we're actually going to help them control their sites because we're really gonna be holding them accountable for it. Most realtors are just appreciative that we are actually imposing a sign ordinance that actually will be able to enforce because we'll be able to say consistently throughout the town, this is what our ordinance is, this is what you have to follow. So with the logic and not requiring people to make more signs, and people that have signs already in existence would be in compliance with sixteen square feet. So I'm in favor of limiting it to the sixteen square feet and frankly enforcing the ordinance, making sure. I don't believe in imposing it unless we're gonna enforce it. So if we're gonna adopt this, then I say we have to enforce it and make sure we get rid of some of this pollution that's existing in our town. So that's my position.
I'd like to underscore that last point, which is, um, one of the dangers of signs is that you need to hear a lot of time, the laws, the rules are darn enforced. And so it seems to me if we're gonna pass this, we should, we should enforce it and, and people should know if we're gonna enforce it, it should be something we, you know, we take seriously. And, and if we're gonna do that, again, thirteen fourteen square feet and sixteen square feet is not something I think we're, you know, die over. But, um, it seems to me if people get the message of reinforcing that, being mindful of the, to the larger size, and you know, that's, that's real.
Uh, well, I'll make a comment.
I'm still at fourteen, but I, even at fourteen, I, I felt that we were going to enforce it. Else why waste everybody's time here tonight?
Uh, so since the last meeting, I did, I knew the staff was doing this analysis and I did my analysis. I wrote around it and put the signs in. Your, uh, photos of, of the signs that are in here that are out there are very representative of what I saw. What I found was that most signs would comply with twelve, with fourteen or twelve square feet. But there were a number of locations where there were multiple signs on the property. That when you add up those multiple signs, they well exceed sixteen square feet. And frankly, I, I think the issue that's important is to have an ordinance that we can all be behind. Uh, I don't think the difference between fourteen and sixteen square feet is that big of a deal. So I, I'm personally, I'm fine with the staff recommendation.
I'd like to move that we, uh, approved the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city council in the town of Appleton, amending chapter fifteen point thirty-six of the Appleton Municipal Code relating to signs. And that does make the signs be limited to sixteen square foot maximum size with the other, um, um, items and, uh, regulations in the existing ordinance as attached.
Okay, twenty-four, okay, sixteen square feet is one side, so if it's two-sided sign, it would be eight square feet on each side.
Correct. They, they will now read the sign when they're not exceeding sixteen square feet in size in total, including both sides, where both sides of the sign are visible from a public road or lightway. In any case, maximum dimension for any side of any side should be four feet.
Uh, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, great. We have the unanimous decision. Moving on to number seven, uh, no, sorry, sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You, you saw, we currently don't have a wireless telecommunications facility ordinance, so we brought this to the council at a study session to, to discuss on November fifth. And since that time, staff made a number of adjustments to correct some inconsistencies in the definitions section of the ordinance, but the bulk of the ordinance remains as it was presented at that meeting. As the city attorney will, will find, as they know much better, deny about the nature of the FCC and enforcement of wireless facilities. There's not a lot of control that the town has over these things. And the ordinance that's presented to you tonight for introduction, uh, pretty much governs the extent of what the town can do. During my one-on-one meetings with the council, uh, there was some concern about what can we do with respect to concealment? How can we make concealment, uh, better worded, so that it's stronger, so that in terms of design, we can make sure that it mimics the surrounding area, trees, buildings, whatever the cell site is connected to or near. And we could probably certainly do that, and there might be some expression of that this evening during discussion. But it's recommended that you, uh, take public comment, discuss both ordinance, make a motion to read the ordinance by title only, and the city clerk will do so. Make a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance and wait for future reading. We'll come back with a second reading of the ordinance in January. And at that time, we'll also come back with a recommendation of a fee for the permit and a recommendation of leasing amounts for those public rights of way which currently do not have the sole priority down.
And the fee would be in a rest of separate revenue?
Correct.
Are there any questions in clarification? No question in clarification. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, moving back to council. Any comments on the council?
Yeah, I brought this up to George. Um, I know that there, there was a provision in, in there for, uh, having a higher than a thirty-five foot, antenna or tower, um, you know, if it was going to quote-unquote blend in with, with the surrounding areas. So if we had, you know, a series of redwood trees and they could maybe put some artificial branches. And of course, the storm has brought to light that, you know, trees occasionally fall down. And so we wouldn't wanna have a fifty-foot tree, you know, tower, uh, just because of the, at the time that, that we approved the permit, we had large oaks or large redwood trees. And then, you know, and then, uh, one day, we're just gonna have a tall tower standing there. And so, um, I think that George and I spoke a little bit about, uh, you know, maybe some additional, uh, criteria before we would approve that type of exemption, um, because, you know, things like trees do fall down and, and, you know, you, the tree, the, the antenna and the stand, the tower could be quite unsightly just standing alone. And so, um, wanted to bring that to the people's attention.
Any other questions, or, or, or comments?
I'll make a couple. Uh, you know, it's frustrating, uh, seeing us have this before us. And frankly, this is something that we probably should have adopted a long time ago. And frankly, we've collected money on all these towers that we do have throughout the town. It's surprising that we have as many as we do. But we do have to move forward, in my opinion, to start wrapping our arms around some of these things and start collecting some revenue from some of these very valuable poles that we have. And, um, I know that we have some extreme limitations of what we can do. And believe me, it's frustrating, you know, sitting up here thinking we can regulate these things more, we can stop. We really can't. We're very, very limited. So what Councilman Whitmer was mentioning, you know, Kenery, when we've talked about sign ordinance is, you know, we want these poles and everything else to, frankly, we don't want them there. And if we can't see them because they look like a tree, that's a whole nother thing. But, uh, I think that we do have to move forward and, and start, and we do have to find out what other neighboring jurisdictions are getting. Plus, our Appleton real estate stipend for the high cost of real estate, uh, we might do all right, so.
I do, I think, I just think this is a huge step for us. And, um, but, um, council member, uh, Reese, he's up here. Anyway, um, the thing is, um, I read it and, uh, I brought this up to George that I don't think it has enough teeth in it about design criteria. I go to Scottsdale, Arizona, a lot. I don't know if any of you have been there. But they have, uh, their cell towers that look like sorrel cacti. And, you know, in all of their neighborhoods and they're, they're, they blend in beautifully. And so we went online and, um, there's, there is a little bit more, uh, definition in the Scottsdale ordinance about wireless that I would like to, uh, submit to staff and to our council for consideration in, uh, this, uh, definition, I guess on page two in our, um, the ordinance of, uh, twelve point five, number two, oh, the definitions of camouflage or concealed, uh, because we do talk about that it would have to mimic nearby natural or architectural features. And does that mean it could be, if we, if it's a new, if it's a new facility, can we create that, make them create kind of like an oak tree or a redwood tree in this certain situation? And so the, the language that Scottsdale has talks a little bit more about that equipment cabinets, service panels, service connections shall be screened by solid walls, landscaping or berms. And screening shall blend in, in with or enhance the surrounding context in terms of scale, form, texture, materials, and color. And so if we can kind of, because I understand from city attorney that we are really limited in what we can say in this ordinance because the FCC has the final, uh, word and we can make our ordinance null and void if we cross a line. So I'm just submitting, can we add some more, uh, definition about, uh, new facilities having to really blend in and maybe look like a tree?
The FCC just issued some brand-new regulations within the last couple of months. We've looked at them. One of the things that I recall, they said we could do, as long as we don't say no to the tower, we can say that they have to camouflage it, as long as what we do is reasonable. You know, for instance, if something out there is commercially available to make it look like a redwood tree or a, or a cactus, but there's nothing out there to make it look like an oak tree because maybe, because oak trees have such a big base on them. That might not be reasonable. So we have to be very careful. But I think your language is fine in terms of trying to make it blend in as much as possible. There's one in Pebble Beach, I would find you can find it. It looks like an old dead Monterey pine tree, just like a big log sticking up in the air. Um, most people just think it's a dead tree. It's not. It's a, it's on the table. So there are ways they can do this, and I think that's a fine way to do this.
So I, I, I agree with Elizabeth's comment. I, that, that sounds good. And one of the reasons that we're going through this now rather than a few years ago is that I think the staff has made a very cost-effective decision not to lead on this, but to take what was in Hillsborough and to parallel what is done in Hillsborough. So we've really leveraged the work that Hillsborough spent to craft this ordinance, and we've done it very cost-effectively.
And we may have recently gone back and looked at it and made the changes that are, that are required to comply with the new regulations as much as we can.
Yeah, great. So, uh, my comment is, if, I would like, uh, the city attorney to look at this language and add this language into the camouflage, uh, paragraph because this seems like pretty innocuous language, but it's stronger. And in, in the permitting and the, uh, in the process with, with the permitting, where, where the telecommunications firm is coming in, you gotta deploy it, we could use this language to help with the camouflage, you know?
Can I just add one more thing? If there's a, if we need to co-locate, I mean, we, we received a, um, a map, right? Of all the, uh, sites all over town, right? T-Mobile, Verizon, um, AT&T, Sprint. And they're like scattered. If there, if there was an opportunity to kind of co-locate some of these random, um, towers and eyesores throughout our town into, um, a beautiful giant camouflage oak, which would be a new tower and, you know, it's something that we could aspire to.
We think that this ordinance will move some of these, uh, telecommunications people in that direction because now there will be a cost to putting a new tower out there standing alone. Right now, there hasn't been a real cost. And if that cost can then be shared by two or three of them, um, they may find that to be much more reasonable. They don't tangically get along very well. I mean, they're, they're...
They're competitors, you mean?
They're in competition, but that's one of the areas where if, if, if our fee for, you know, our lease arrangement with them requires them to pay a, a heavy amount, then, then it's in their best interest to find someone to share with.
And it's actually required under the ordinance under page eight, section C. Wireless facilities should be co-located with existing facilities if they're within fifteen hundred feet of a visible facility, unless we determine that a particular design proposed would not create excessive visual clutter or would otherwise create harms to the town and not near it.
Got it. Yes, I have that one.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I, I'm, uh, a little late on, on this, but among my other chores, I'm the chairman of the Financial Affairs Committee from the San Jose Presbyterian. And we've had quite a lot of dealings with cell towers. We have a number of cell towers located in Church Steeple. It makes a very satisfactory site. And, uh, they're well-hidden. Uh, sometimes they're not visible at all. Also, we've been involved with the joint leasing of cell towers by several firms. There are firms out there that are in the business of buying up leases so they can provide these combinations. So my suggestion to you is hang tough. Make it as rigid as you can and, and be insistent on it because you don't have to put up with abuse by these people.
There's our negotiator. Can I give you just one, one little, uh, bit of information about, you know, the, the reality of what's going on with cellular sites in the town is, we aren't, they're, they're coming in and putting in new towers, okay? We, we have one tower at the Alameda de Las Bogas. And then they've used some existing things such as the water tower at the school and the, the lights, uh, the light tower at Mellow Atherton High School. For the most part, what they're doing, in fact, I had an application come in this week for nine new sites, new. Not, not fixing co-existing ones. So this is gonna be a good one to, to work out this with. But they don't wanna use existing telephone poles that exist already.
Right.
So you have a telephone pole and they just put a little clipper on the top.
Hang all over it and it's just normal.
But, but you, you can't make that look like a tree because you have high power lines, so you can't. Yeah, PGA won't allow that, so.
How much, how many words can say, hang on, a hole?
Correct. Well, they, they really can't for the...
We're, we're gonna just talk about that.
I know Hillsborough, you have got to write, uh, there's a way at that. Hillsborough, they went to the math with them. They filed lawsuits and everything. And this, this is, we, we have benefited from their work and expense in this ordinance. But I wanna go another step and try to make it more beautiful. Okay?
But, but as, I might say, as Steve just said, it's something that we need to get off.
Yes, I hope, I hope, Steve, it takes six or eight months to process those permits.
You're right.
Give us time to, to, to get this ordinance done.
Yeah.
So, I think that we are, that is, we're moving.
I don't know exactly how to see the election. It doesn't have good one revise.
You just made the motion for a read it by title only with the amendments.
As you suggested.
Oh, I will. Uh, I will move that the council, uh, read, move forward to adopt this ordinance and that we ask the city clerk to read this by title only with the amendments that have been suggested by council, by Vice Mayor Lewis. And, um, uh, and then it will
And when you call for an all vote favor.
Okay.
It was running the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, that's unanimous. City clerk?
For the town of Atherton, adopting a new chapter twelve point zero five of the Atherton Municipal Code regarding wireless transportation facilities.
Okay. And do we need additional?
No.
Okay. We will move to item seventeen, which is a fleet vehicle purchase.
Mayor, members of the council, city council recently approved a hiring of a community service slash code enforcement officer and a town arborist. These are new full-time town employee positions that require assigned vehicles that are not available in the town's current vehicle fleet. Staff considered a number of transportation alternatives and decided that reassigning the police departments to two thousand nine Toyota Camry hybrids to the code enforcement officer and the town arborist was the best alternative based on the cost, convenience, functionality, and safety. We recommend replacing the Camrys with two new unmarked Ford Police Interceptors. The Police Interceptors are pursuit rated and are specially designed from the ground up for the rigorous demands of law enforcement. Although the majority of time, these unmarked Police Interceptors would be used by police administrative staff, both Lieutenant Wade and myself have taken enforcement action and have responded to assist officers on high priority calls in unmarked vehicles. Additionally, officers and detectives have and will use these vehicles for high-risk police operations and surveillance. There are also a number of other benefits to the Police Interceptor, such as vehicle fleet continuity for maintenance, repairs, warranty work, and parts cannibalization. There's also consistency in our emergency vehicle operation training as the schools would use the same that we have in our fleet. There's also the availability of a current open bid with the San Mateo Police Department and a cost savings of seventeen thousand in comparison to purchasing new Camry hybrids. The cost of the two new two thousand and fifteen unmarked Ford Tourist Police Interceptors is fifty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-one cents, including sales tax, California tire tax, license, emergency equipment such as red lights and siren, and needed communications equipment, plus installation costs. The finance director has confirmed there are sufficient funds in the town's vehicle replacement account for these expenditures. The bid price of the Ford Tourist Police Interceptors originated from a five-vehicle purchase by the city of San Mateo through the Redwood City Corp yard from Town Ford in Redwood City. By pecking backing off this current city of San Mateo two thousand and fourteen sealed bid, we comply with the town's purchasing policy and save five hundred dollars per vehicle, not counting the additional work and staff time by reinstituting a new competitive bid process. You have before you a detailed report and for your consideration, and I am prepared to answer any questions you may have, council.
I guess I'll have a question. Chief, can you identify what, what the true definition of a police pursuit vehicle is?
Well, that's kind of misleading. It's, it's actually, is also called an emergency vehicle. What makes it an emergency vehicle is the installing a red light and siren and being used by police agencies or fire agencies. Police also have that added requirement to be able to get places quickly and pursue people if they have to, if it's justified. Those vehicles are equipped with, have a certain weight to horsepower ratio. They're generally all-wheel drive or rear-wheel drive. They have beefed up suspension, high-speed brake lining, V-rated tires, extended capabilities of cooling both for the radiator and transmission and are designed to be, to be allowed to idle for considerable periods of time. Without overheating.
Well, that's a good question. I know that all vehicles aren't pursuit rated because we, I noticed that we purchased and the state purchases certain vehicles and they have to have a certain rating. Is there a liability issue? So can somebody chime in on a liability?
I think that anytime a police vehicle is involved in an accident and somebody's injured, there's going to be a thorough investigation by the other side looking into, was the car being operated correctly? And the first thing that they look at is, was it the vehicle itself? Was it a pursuit rated vehicle? If you buy from State Pool, you know, CHP cars, they are specced to the T to be a pursuit vehicle. If you buy from LA County or the state of LA, same thing. Anybody that buys a police car in the state of California will buy one that is rated with, I just call it, the police packages that were put out by the various manufacturers. And they have to have those. Because if they don't have those and there's an accident, you'll, the, the lawyer, the trial lawyer is going to look at it and say, ah, there's the defect. There's the reason, there's a possible reason that I can convince a jury that this accident occurred. And it doesn't matter if the police car got hit, they're going to look at it and try to find something we did wrong. And having a car that's not rated, um, could be a liability problem and it could be seen somewhere that somebody is injured if there's some kind of an accident.
I have a question for the chief of the city or someone. And that's when we authorize the hiring of somebody, presumably if we try to identify the full loaded cost of the employee. So this had to be factored in some, was this cost factored in some way? And if not, what assumptions are used? When you hire somebody who needs a car and there's no car?
Typically, the police department, yes. If we're going to hire an officer, we would make sure we had a vehicle for that officer. When we looked at the arborist, we really didn't factor in the cost of it. There were other opportunities. We have a contract position. So that contract position had their own vehicle. So we just, we didn't think about the vehicle as part of it.
Well, you know, I had actually brought that up when we were discussing those and the fact that we're bringing these people in for fixed terms, they may be extended further. It would, it would lead one to consider, and I was going to wait until we actually had a discussion, but, uh, to consider perhaps a lease and a less expensive car for these people. I understand the situation the chief is bringing forward because he and I have discussed this. But, but if we're doing the, you know, the, first off, as Mike had pointed out, we should have evaluated the cost when we said this is total cost of having these contractors and this is the total cost of having, you know, people that are going to be on our payroll. The contractors use their own cars. And so, um, this should have been factored in. So now second, but secondly, you know, a lease of a lesser car, um, with some, possibly even a hybrid that would have, you know, rebates and things like that, all the things that the government is authorizing people to do to, to try and encourage and beat the quotas of having so many hybrid cars out or electric cars out on the, on the street today, just seems that perhaps we should be looking into that. If we choose not to look at that, or there's some ordinance that says we can't evaluate or we can't lease cars, even though we, the people that'll be driving will only be here for three or four years, then fine, you know, I agree with, if we're going to buy two new cars, you know, give the chief what he wants. But, but, you know, I have a kind of a fat taste in my mouth with regards to the evaluation of people. We can have this in it, even though we did bring it up. And, and, and that we've not looking at the least cost options, which for me would be lease a lesser car, a small compact car, an electric, an electric car, perhaps, that, that the arborist and the code compliance officer would only be driving in low speed and would only be driving here in the town would use.
I don't, I don't, a question?
Oh.
Here are no further questions. We'll open the public comment. Is there any public comment on this issue?
I'm not sure if my comment relates to this item or the general public comment at the close of the meeting. But I just thought
This will be a comment on this particular item of these two fleet purchases for these two vehicles.
Well, is there another opportunity?
Yes, there is.
I'll wait, I'll wait.
Okay. Is there, anybody else have a public comment? Okay. Here are no public comment. Uh, is there a comment from the council?
Uh, I have a comment. Um, although I agree that this should have been addressed and we should have put it into the program. We're now dealing with it because now we have to put two be, two people in vehicles. I personally am not interested in putting a police chief or lieutenant in a hybrid vehicle. Uh, but I am interested in putting a, uh, both the chief and the lieutenant in a vehicle that is pursuit rated that will keep the exposure to this town if in fact they have a need for that, um, to be in compliance with the law to reduce our overall liability. Um, I think that using the cars that the chief and lieutenant currently have for the town arborist and a town code enforcement officer is going to be something that is a good idea. And I think that, I don't know how they got most far in the first place.
I wasn't there.
May I have your comment? So I remember in two thousand and nine, I'm sitting in the council and, uh, you know, uh, the chief and the lieutenant needed, they needed a car. And so we said, you know, their administration. And so, you know, we really want to move towards low emission cars, uh, you know, being as green as possible. And so that's what happened. There was never any, uh, issue about pursuit rated or anything that's being raised now, although, uh, you know, maybe we've dodged a bullet the last six years or so. But, um, you know, I, and so my question again is, I understand how they got into these Toyota Camrys, although I wanted to ask you this, but, you know, they wouldn't give it to me. Um, and, um, so is the town still paying for these Camrys or do we buy them outright? So we own them. So, um, I think that to not use these vehicles at this time for other employees or staff in town would be unwise to go out and lease new cars and add extra expense. Uh, it's a sunk cost already. We, we paid for it. They've been depreciated. They're, they're still working, I assume. And, um, but given all of the rationale that the city attorney just gave me about the need for our police chief and our lieutenant to be in a pursuit rated vehicle, I certainly feel that that's the direction we should go post haste. I don't want any liability of, you know, coming, coming after us for them not being in the appropriate type of car. So, uh, I'm, I'm willing to approve this request.
Is there any other comments?
Well, I, I, there's a misunderstanding. The, the chief and lieutenant are actually driving these cars today. Is that not correct, chief?
That's correct.
So it's not that the cars are sitting idle and no one's using them and they're scrap and
No, no, I understand that. No, there's not a misunderstanding on that.
Okay. I'll make a comment. So I think a couple of things. I think that we all, I think, kind of missed the cost that's associated with these two positions that we hired that's related to the vehicles. Um, and I agree with Carrie. That's behind us. We need to move forward. Let's be aware of that in the future because it clearly is a cost that we wouldn't bear with a contractor, but we will bear with an employee. Uh, I all, I, I agree with council member Widmer that if all were the same, I'd rather see us lease an electric vehicle or a hybrid vehicle, uh, where we can get some of the environmental points that we need and where we don't commit beyond the term of the employees that will be using them. But in this case, uh, we've got two vehicles that are available and it sounds like we didn't really evaluate the pursuit rated vehicle issue when we chose to purchase those vehicles. Uh, I, I think that we do need a certain pursuit rated vehicles for the lieutenant and the chief. And because we, as a town, already own these vehicles, we might as well use them. Uh, so that all seems pretty self-evident to me. And, and we should move forward, notwithstanding the fact that, uh, in my opinion, in the future, when we come up with a automobile need that is not pursuit rated for an employee that will be using that vehicle in the town, we should, there's no reason not to buy something like a Bolt or, or another vehicle that doesn't have extended range because you don't need it. I understand. So I think we're
And we can't get a Tesla.
As the mayor just said, you know, I mentioned one of the, we're talking about fire control impact, you know, that's how often we see police cars in RER and like running. Uh, and in terms of low hanging fire control, that would be easiest when they're in arrest.
Do you think, when is, when are Teslas going to be considered rated?
So, okay. I think the issue is the older vehicles.
I'm looking for a motion. So I'm going to make the motion to purchase the two landmark two thousand and fifteen Ford Tourist Police Interceptors at a total cost of fifty-eight thousand four ninety-seven seventy-five. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed because we didn't look at a lease option. Uh, and I'm not opposed to the liability thing for the chief, but I, I just, I'm opposed because of the issues I've got.
Okay. I think that's a person Tesla. Moving on. Uh, council report, comment, carry none. Uh, future agenda items, carry none. Uh, now Greg.
Well, I have one. Okay. Yes. So, uh, let's go very quickly. A future agenda item, Recology is in the process of making a sixty percent, um, purchase in, in the, the SPR operation. And the board today, you know, gave consent for, you know, to sign the contract and allow Recology to take that. There are a number of issues associated with it, but eight of the twelve jurisdictions need to formally ratify it. So that's going to have to come up in, in January. Um, but, uh, but the, the board did approve it today, uh, nine oh. Um, and I'm more than happy to participate in helping you get the staff report done. Uh, there's a hope that there's going to be some synergies that would bring some cost savings, et cetera. Um, and we still have the benefit of, of, and all the applicability of, of the contracts as they stand. But, uh, we will have to do a formal ratification of that.
On, on future agenda items, I want to mention one thing. In my statement tonight, I mentioned the issue we're talking about, this telecommunications committee of the Atherton Library Donor Fund. Uh, in April, we have a study session to look at the library donor fund. And we have that because the library JPA has established a subcommittee to review the whole donor fund structure with a proposal by some of the other cities to eliminate the donor fund provision from the JPA. Uh, and as I mentioned, Atherton is currently accumulating approximately one point three million dollars a year in the donor fund because those are taxes that we pay that are not being used by the library. So I would encourage as material comes out for this April study session for you to take a hard look at it because this is going to be a really important issue to us. Here are no future further, uh, further future items. We are at a public comment. Issue Greg.
Yeah, this may be moved. The chief could clarify, but, you know, with all the attention that's going on the last week at city councils up and down the peninsula of, of police getting, uh, what do they call them? Video
Video cameras.
Cameras. I, I just don't know where, where we're doing that here. And I know at Menlo, they had a fatality with three police officers that had the equipment on and two of them didn't have it on and the other one was under repair. So, uh, I'm just not sure. But I, I, I just think it's, you need to consider it because everybody else is in the light of what's going on. Thank you.
Sure. I believe Atherton's every game on that. When our officers are issued, the chief has an existing policy that advances their use.
My understanding is that we have had them on every on duty officer for five years?
At lea, yeah, at least, about that.
So we, we were way ahead of the game.
Were they on?
Were they on?
They're on.
And they functioned.
And they, they have a policy to be on.
Did, did you know?